Hello?
Can you guys hear us okay?
Yes.
All right, good morning, everyone. We, everybody is here, it is 9:30, so I'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. Let's see. Who does roll? The roll call? I don't know. I think so. Okay. I'll forget somebody. Here. Here.
Here.
This, Alan Gregory?
Here.
And I'll add Pat's, I'll add Patsy Sitzman on as a guest. Okay? All right, very good. Let's get to public comment. Is there any public comment this morning? All right, hearing none, we'll close the public comment. And moving on to the approval of the February minutes. Is there a motion to approve the February minutes?
So moved.
Okay. Second by John, is there any further discussion on the minutes? Very good, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good. Thank you. Okay, and on to financials.
Yes, and the reason we don't have the December financials is they are waiting for the, what's called the February Treasurers letter that tells you how much they expect us to receive in property tax. And for some reason, we never got it last year at all. And it comes to Becca, so she is asked when we might see that. But they want to book, they booked property taxes as a deferred revenue on the December report, so that's why we haven't seen that. But hopefully soon. I can report that in terms of our bank balance, at the end of December, we were, had 814,000. At the end of January, we had 811, so very little activity.
All right, so therefore, we don't need a motion to approve?
No.
Where, we didn't, did we not have, okay, so that puts us back how many? So next month, we'll need to approve December, January, and?
If we get them, right, again, yeah.
Just trying to keep track. Trying to keep up.
Right.
With the county. All right, very good. Okay then, are there any questions for Ann regarding the financials? Very good, then we'll move on to old business.
Elektra?
Okay, so we met with John Block and, and I'm looking for my notes, my detailed notes. We met with John Block and his son. And basically, the LaFawn is, the, 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 the LaFawn needs to renegotiate their contract that's coming up for the URA tax financing. And Alan told me yesterday that they actually were, it was in June where they needed to update it, is that correct? Can you correct me?
No, it was August.
August.
It was every August, you know?
Okay.
They had it like two years, and then every August is when?
So it hasn't been updated since August?
I thought it was August, I thought it was last August.
Okay.
They had kicked in another 25K to extend it another year. And then, my understanding is next August, they would do that again.
Okay, yeah, so there's the, the, go ahead Farley.
Well, just to, just to clarify, they have two extension, or they have one extension of two years.
Yes.
And they're in the first year extension now, so they have another one already built into the contract. When they approached us last month, they are requesting additional years on that contract because they believe that this project, if it gets approved by CHAF, it could be up to four to five years. So before they go any further with that, they're going to come to the URA next month and request that we provide them with additional years. They don't want to go forward, and then they don't have the years from us. So they're going to bring, I asked them to bring a timeline for us to present so that you all can actually visually see why they're predicting four years. Was it four years?
Yeah, I believe that's what it was. They, they went over the history of the project with us in, in depth. They, they went over the natural grocers piece, and then, and then the zoning changes, and then the first proposal for 78 units, and then the second proposal for affordable housing units, and who they were working with as a tax, a tax group to help them figure out the financing. So, yeah. Yeah, that was, that was the majority of what we, we talked about in that meeting. And, yeah, so that is, basically, we're going to, they're coming back in April with a presentation on the extension and their timeline as well.
All right, any questions? Or Elektra? Okay, then we'll move on to the Dillon property.
All right, so we also, I am going to be meeting with Ron, with Roy Chaney and Andrew to talk about that property as well. And we needed to have more of a conversation. It, it may be wise to see the plans before deciding whether or not to contribute to them, and see the overall plan. But basically, the conversation from last month was tabled to have it this month about whether or not we were going to contribute to the, the pedestrian bridge. And I think the, the plans are probably in order before that conversation is wholly completed, in, in my, in my opinion. And that's just an opinion, but, yeah. Yeah, go ahead, John.
I'll comment. Is there, well, this project is moving very slowly. We don't have a plan to review yet. I, the work session that I listened in on, the last time this was presented to council for feedback, the priority is to have an interim gravel parking lot, as I understand it, sometime this year, right? And so
Probably by the summer.
And I doubt that the pedestrian bridge would be in that phase. So to me, the, probably the, the way to proceed would be number one, to review the plans, number two, to investigate how it's being valued, engineered, and second and thirdly, to discuss this as a part of our budget for 2026, since that's probably the timeframe that the money would be needed. With that said, I'm in favor of contributing something. I just, I don't know how much that is at this point in time, and at least my opinion, I don't know how much it is, but I'm in favor of contributing something, but I think it's premature to decide how much that is. Just as a, a general comment, they mentioned a 10-foot wide pedestrian bridge. I, I've happened to visit a fairly well-used bridge on my trip in Arizona, and it's six feet wide. And I don't see why a six-feet, foot-wide bridge can't function in this location. If you have to put a sign, walk your bike, fine, but that saves a lot of money.
Just, I, since I've been working on urban trails within the city a lot, 10 feet wide is for ADA, and we're trying to get all urban trails, paved trails and so on, in Manitou to be 10-foot wide. So I would just throw that in for consideration as well.
To me, ADA issue is going to be one of grade more than anything in this location. Yeah.
So, so do we, what I'm hearing is that we want to give direction to Elektra, perhaps to contact Roy and just say that we're not willing to, or not, not willing, that's not what I want to say, that we're not, we're, we're not, we don't want to discuss what we might contribute until we see the plans?
Plans and a timeline, I think.
Plans and a timeline.
If John's correct, and they're not looking to even start construction this year, then I think putting it off until we discuss the 2026 budget makes sense.
Would we want to request, I mean, they don't even have a plan yet, right? There's no plans. Okay. Do we want a presentation when they get the plans? We would also prefer a presentation when they have a plan. Barb?
Nancy, can you add any color to this conversation about what's going on at City Council?
Just that, we were going, we just recently approved a $1.3 million loan application to do what John said, to do the dirt parking lot, small part ADA paved, build a two-story, or renovate one of the buildings as a two-story parking office and put in restrooms for 2025. So then, that's pretty much the only concrete thing that we've got so far. We're looking at other options, i.e., 2026, finishing Hiawatha Gardens, and then continuing to move on, or finishing the parking lot of Hiawatha Gardens, and then moving on to expand on Dillon. However, the complicating factor in that is apparently you can't leave it as a dirt lot for more than a year because it does something, I don't know what. So we may have to readjust our timeline as well. Does that help?
And I'd like to bring up the sculpture, number five. At some point, since we clearly have time, I'd like the opportunity to make the pitch that the sculpture is down near the pedestrian bridge entrance and not up on the avenue. And we do have precedent with the Columbine, which is not visible from the avenue. So if I can bring that next time, I would like to. I don't think there's any hurry at this point, but it's coming. Okay. Any other questions on the Dillon? Hi Carol. Very good. Okay, board vacancy. So, so Pat Sitzman has put in her request to the mayor to be appointed. She will be appointed this evening, and so she will be joining us next month. I, prior to that, did write the mayor a letter requesting, on behalf of the URA board, that Nancy also be appointed to this board, and I was denied that. It is going to be on the agenda this evening. It is. For me to be appointed? No. No, okay, thank you. The, the, the topic of board, of appointing somebody. And there is a letter just explaining his position on why Nancy is not being appointed. So if you would like to take a look at that or follow along this evening, it, I think it's unfortunate, but I'm not quite sure how, I'm not quite sure how we can maneuver around it. So we'll see what happens this evening. Okay? Any other questions about that? That does leave us with one vacancy, isn't that correct? But with two, well, if
Actually, under current states, or the state statute we operate under?
Right.
It's up to 11.
That's right.
It's really broad.
Which is big.
But it's in that state statute where it suggests we should have an odd number rather than an even number.
Okay.
So there's no, until we get to 11, we have vacancies in effect.
Okay.
So Pat would be our seventh member, correct?
Correct.
I can't get my voice thing going here. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
I have, the reason that, that Nancy probably is not going to be a member of this board, even though we really appreciate her being city council liaison. There is a point in city code that is 2.09.040, that a city council member cannot be a board member. It's as simple as that. No, no offense Nancy, but we really appreciate you being the liaison back and forth, but I understand the situation because of code.
Sure, Patsy and I, I appreciate that. That code does not apply to the URA board, however, it applies to other boards and commissions, city boards and commissions.
We probably need to get that clarified.
Yeah, I think that's true, because we've had many times in the past, we've had city council members on
And a mayor.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, this has just been rewritten in, I think in the last two years, this revision.
It was actually 2019 that
Oh, there you go.
section of code was added in, in
There you go.
Not code.
It was in the municipal code 2.0, you know, administration and boards and
That's, that's in ordinance, and it does not apply to the URA board.
Okay, I was just clarifying what, what she was talking about. It was added in
Well, thank you for the clarification.
So Farley, are, are you making a presentation or commenting at, at meeting at all in this regard?
No, I had not planned on it. I mean, I don't have any, I could, I could do public comment, I can't comment on the
Are we trying to contest it or add anything or? What, can you, can you highlight what was in Mayor Graham's?
Yes, his notes. He feels that the URA board is already heavily loaded with members from Crystal Hills, and so he wants somebody from another ward, wants more representation from other parts of town. That was one reason. I think that was the I'll have to pull it up. Can you recall Nancy? Oh, good. I The rules, he does, he does say that the rules that apply to the URA are set by the state and are therefore different from boards and commissions. He does say that under city code, members of the city council are prohibited serving on city boards and commissions. Liaison positions are intended to facilitate communication for council and boards, but not to leverage the work of advisory boards in the policy creating mission of the council, and that city council, in, in accordance with city code, if, in making appointments, city council shall strive to select members representative of all community demographics and stakeholder groups. So he believes that the community would benefit from broader representation, and that councillors should not serve on the URA board.
Yeah, and I would indicate, I guess, how the URA functions is governed by state statute, not city code.
Right, okay.
And I think the state statute's fairly clear that governing members of the city can be members of the URA board. And I think the notion that there's some need to have representation from various areas of the city is just an opinion. I mean, that's clearly not what the URA board is. It's not created to represent different areas of the city. It's a state-created entity that has a purpose under state statute. So I think all the rest of this is just personal opinions, frankly. But I'm not sure, at this point, it's worth a fight.
I agree, which is why I had decided not to, and I in fact did not respond when he told me he was denying Nancy. I just thought it was, I didn't know what, what, what it would, what good it would do.
I think we're very fortunate to have Nancy as our liaison.
I agree.
Thank you Nancy.
If you can find the statute, I could read that in public comment, and that was all, I could do that, but
I don't think they would want you to do it since it's on the agenda. You could do it the next regular meeting, but if you did it tonight, you'd be out of order, I think. The, the policy is, that's essentially what non-agenda means, it's not on the agenda, and since it's on the agenda, it would be
Right, no, I can't, I know I can't comment on the agenda item, but I could take my three minutes, right? But I, I didn't really plan on doing it, frankly. I don't know, I don't know that it's going to do anything.
Yeah, I think
I think Nancy's got to fight the fight.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay, any further discussion on this topic? All right, well, welcome Pats, we'll see you next month on the board, in person, possibly. Okay, executive director report.
All right, so I put together my, sort of, my preliminary plan, it's, you know, it's floating because it will shift as meetings and things occur. So for February, March, I started reaching out to planning department, I've got, I've walked with the district with Farley, I've walked the district with John, and I've walked the district with Alan, and I'd like to walk the district with the, the other members of the board individually, and just get sort of the collective idea and around what the vision is for the URA. I also have meetings set up with the city manager, and I have meetings set up with the planning, planning director and, and staff to talk about that, as well as with Roy Chaney to talk about the Dillon property, but also about parking and the overall concept and plan. I've started reaching out a little bit to city council, Natalie Johnson, and I will be walking this week as well. And Alan said he could help me connect to other members of the city council to walk the, the district and then the planning commission as well. So I, I'd like to walk it individually and just get everybody's ideas and come up with kind of an overall plan. I, let's see, I guess I should go along. Yeah, so the strategic engagement outreach, that's March. That's my goal, in April, May, continue to talk with stakeholders, and then to plan to do a little bit of community engagement, especially around the Dillon property, because it's a public facilities piece. And Alan and I walked it yesterday, and it's like the crown jewel of the URA property, and it would be good to just get some other ideas around that. I don't know if that's like, that ship has sailed, but it's a great property, honestly, and it would be a real benefit to the URA if it were used at its best use. And John and I walked it as well, as far as pedestrian access and, and where the bridge is going to go, and eyes on the bridge, and more pedestrian activity, and those kinds of things. So that was very beneficial. We also walked, both of us walked in the area where, behind the ballfields and the soccer fields, that patch that the city has just taken over, and and the fence has been removed since John and I walked it, and it was, it's a great spot for helping deal with some of the congestion within the city. And Alan and I had some really good conversations around that, as far as using it for some different, you know, activities and things of that nature, when it's super congested downtown as a, as a possibility. And so we sort of brainstormed over, over that piece, and that sort of bled into, which I'll talk to, let's see, LaFawn is later on the agenda, I can talk to that later, with the Park Row property. But, and I'll, I'll talk about the Park Row property as well in, in the update, in new business, but some of our brainstorming sort of bled into Park Row possibilities as well. And so the goal is to work with LaFawn property, the work, to work with the Dillon property and the city. Park Row is another one that I think is coming up for some collaboration. I also, I guess I didn't put that in there with Carol as well, we talked about featuring the artists on, as Farley brought up in our meeting, to feature the artists in, that are being, that, that Audrey has proposed individually in, in public, you know, in social media and whatnot, and I can help promote that as well, and push that out there and get more, more interaction too. And worked with Carol a little bit, which was wonderful. And then, just, just basically started going through all of Jim Reese's pieces, and laid out kind of a, an idea of a timeline of what to work on, month by month. So that's, that's sort of where I'm at, where I'm at right now with all of that. It's in more detail, and it will be kind of a moving target as well as, as we move through those, those next couple of months, so, thank you.
Okay, does anybody have any questions for Elektra or any comments?
I, I think the only person that I don't have contact for is Alan Gregory as well. If you can email me your, your contact information, then we can set up a time too to talk and walk.
I will.
Great, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Elektra. Moving on to new business, and the Park Row.
Okay, so Park Row, I met with the owner of Park Row, of the Park Row property, and her husband, very briefly, her name is Young King, and her husband's an artist, and they'd like to retire. She's 75, he's 79. And I think that they, they would like to, they saw the Dillon sell, and they have, they listed it in 2020, and they've listed it again. I don't know if they've actually listed it. She said they were listing and maybe listed it, but I, I don't know if it's actually been listed. But they, they want, it's, it's eight separate buildings, and it does need some significant updates. There's that, the, the cabin that burnt, and they are having a difficult time getting the funding from their insurance company, because the funding specifically says that they have to rebuild what was there, and I don't know that they want to rebuild what was there. They want kind of just to be out of it, I believe. So they've owned it for eight years, they've got 21 units, and two of them have kitchenettes, and then they have their main unit that they live in, which is, which is the, the office space. And we just looked at different ideas and talked about different ideas of what that could be, and one of the ideas was affordable housing, of course, because that's a big push from everybody right now. Another idea was, it's such a great spot for retail, or like artists boutiques spaces, or live-work artist spaces, and the rooms are, are, you know, they're, 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 it's, it's a, it's a hotel room with a bathroom, but that's appropriate for like a studio space, or a small boutique, or something of that nature. Alan mentioned that they could be combined as well if you needed bigger spaces. And then there's also, if, if it would be possible to do a mixed-use kind of redevelopment piece too, that back side of the main building could be an amazing little restaurant, or a coffee shop, or a bar, or something, and just to activate that area, especially since the city has just purchased that opposite side as a really beautiful area that connects to the creek and to the watershed. And one of the concerns that, that Alan and, and John and I talked about were, and Farley and I talked about, everybody's talked about this, is, is the turning your back on the river, instead of shifting the focus so that the river becomes kind of more of a focused area for parks and trails, and is more utilized so that it's not just homeless encampments back there, but that citizens and, and other people can use it in a safe way as well. So kind of connecting the properties to that back chunk, that back section. And this Park Row is the best property on the URA to connect to that area to connect to that area of any of the properties, quite honestly, other than the Dillon. Um, and, uh, um, so that back area could be a great restaurant, bar, coffee shop, whatever. And then each of those individual units would be fantastic as some kind of mixed use. So we just sort of, we're looking at those options. Um, I thought about talking to the Fine Arts Center or the, the, the F A C here as possible partnering in cottonwood and some other people in town to see who might be interested in helping figure out a way to make sure that it ends up not just another hotel, but also something that really benefits U R A as its best use. And the owner actually was really encouraging. She wanted as much help as possible. She didn't really know how to do next steps with finding somebody. So.
Elektra, there, um, there might be some contact made with the real estate arm
Okay.
of the Community Foundation.
Oh, fantastic.
Community Foundation.
Okay.
With Sam Clark. And, um, they have funding opportunities with the right kind of proposals. And there, I think it would be worth a preliminary discussion with that group. And, uh, something may come of that that they have on the table that funders would be willing to support. So I think, even though we view ourselves as an enclave, I think we need to reach to our big sister occasionally. Right, okay? And, um, so I think that would be a good contact for you.
Absolutely.
For them.
Yeah.
In particular. So maybe facilitate that.
Absolutely, yeah. And if anybody has any other suggestions for foundations or anything like, like that, that might be interested or knows of any kind of connections. Um, at this point, I was just sort of spitballing, trying to come up with anything. I just don't want to see it turn into like, oh, you know, a use that doesn't really benefit the community. It feels like an opportunity, and there aren't a lot of opportunities in the U R A. So my thought is that each opportunity really needs to be looked at as its very best use. Thank you so much, Barb.
Can I ask a quick question about the burned house?
Yes.
So, is, so the insurance company, that, so i- if they can't, if they can't, they don't want to rebuild, do we want it rebuilt? Because that is blighted now. Technically, that is a blighted building. And I'm wondering, is that something that we should consider participating in in order to remove it? Because if they don't want to rebuild it, and they might not even get enough money to rebuild it, which is the other issue, and then they can't finish it.
Yeah.
So, is that something that we should be considering or looking at? Seeing as how U R A's mission is to remove blight?
Well, that, that, uh, that building before, and if they re-refurbished it after, is not the best use of that property.
Right.
So I would, I would be okay with helping them remove it.
Do they have a quote on what it would be just to remove it?
No, but I, I would be willing to reach out to her and talk to her about it. Uh, and, and honestly, in our conversations too, we talked about a whole bunch of different uses, like townhouses or row houses. There's something that faced the, the area and, and put more activity in the area. Those tiny little houses really aren't the highest use for that area specifically. Um, but part of their issue, it may help them sell it too if, if that burnt building is removed because that's another cost on top of everything else. Um, I, I'd be willing to look at some options for taking it down or, you know, or even the fire department sometimes does. Um, I don't know if they do demolition stuff, but they do like, uh, exercises. Yeah, so that may be one way to help get some funding to do it too in, in concert with, yeah.
Yeah, I would like to look further into it just because it looks terrible.
Yeah.
And you come down the hill from Crystal Hills and it, it's right there. It's awful. And if they can't afford to remove it and they can't get enough money to rebuild it, then it's going to sit there like that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I know that the city is engaged on that as well, so you might want to talk with Denise, uh, because I'm not up to date on what's been happening with that, but.
Okay, that.
You know, it's danger to people, and I know that council has expressed concern about it as well, so. I'm not sure where it is in the status though, because the city ultimately can tear down buildings, but.
Yeah, and what I understand, like with the burned-out building up on Pawnee, the city, they, the city paid to remove the, the structure, however, they put a lien on the property. So having a property is not going to assist this owner.
Right, and there was, and that was a very long process, legal process to get that done, so.
Yeah, well, I will reach out to them and, and brainstorm on some ideas too. Taking down a building is. Yeah, go ahead, Barb.
I was trying to recall, they came, I was looking back at my notes, but they came to us in November asking for a grant.
Okay.
And what I was trying to remember is, did we give them money? But we were willing to, were we not? Is that where that conversation ended up? I thought we approved something on their behalf.
On Park Row?
Yes, because they, they came and made a specific request that it would facilitate their insurance action.
Oh.
But I'm trying to recall what transpired.
We, I, my recollection is we approved a grant to them contingent upon them doing the work.
So, and we probably didn't provide them any funding, but I know we discussed it earnestly on their behalf prior to your.
Okay.
Stepping up. So we've had some engagement with them already. And I think where this discussion is kind of going is maybe they need a quote on demolition, and maybe we could take a look at that in particular, if that would be helpful. And maybe there's some city funds that would en- enjoin in some way, I don't know. But.
Absolutely, yeah.
Maybe that, maybe that's an immediate solution and might also, as we've discussed, help their sale prospects if that was just gone.
Yeah, I'm, I'm looking back at their meeting notes to see if there's anything here.
So it came to us in November, but I hadn't found it.
It would have been a facade improvement.
It would have been a December.
Yeah.
Uh, result.
Okay.
In the December.
Or maybe November, it may have been December.
Oh, here we go. Okay, so, yeah, I did. So Park Row Lodge Grant Request. Mr. Reese informed the board that he'd received a request for site improvement, facade improvement grant from the Park Row Lodge owner to repair the small cottage. Um, uh, let's see, they, uh, applied for the grant and provided a cost estimate prepared by a contractor to make the repairs. Motion was made by Ms. Nichols to approve the grant of up to, uh, twenty-five thousand to assist with the repair work for the facade repairs only and the labor to complete the work. Motion was seconded by Mr. Maynard. The motion passed three to one with Ms. Winter. Opposed, Mr. Reese will inform Ms. Young King of the decision and ask if she provides copies of the final paid invoices. So, um, the request reimbursed for half of the total, not to exceed twenty-five thousand. Okay, so I will add that in as far as from.
And I think my opposition was if it would really go forward, which it hasn't.
In, yes, okay, so I will, um.
I don't know, did we get back with them and indicate our approval of the grant?
I don't, I don't see anything.
Sure Jim did.
Okay.
I will, I will reach out to, to, to Ms. King as well.
So I think what they need is an estimate for demo.
Okay. Okay, sounds good. Yeah, I'll just bring my skid steer over when you drive over it. Pull the whole thing down.
I, I would, I mean, I think we need, it needs to go, but I don't want to see it rebuilt. The same.
Okay, uh, any further discussion or questions on the Park Row?
Kind of exciting. Something happens. It's a great property.
Oh, it's, if anybody hasn't walked the backside of it.
Yeah.
It's like, it's like a little Hobbiton Viking Scandinavian kind of like funny little. Yeah, it's sort of like where, where the Chewbacca and the, you know, all the little, it's, it's wonderful. It's very Manitou.
Very Manitou. I just wanted to say that the HAB, the Housing Advisory Board is also looking at the Park Row.
Oh, fantastic, okay.
So you may want to talk with Allison Gerbig from the HAB. They're having, um, someone come hopefully to their next meeting from some housing authority thing to talk about possible funding sources and so on for, um. So, another point of contact for you.
Yeah, can you send me that contact? That would be fantastic. I'll put them on my list as well to talk and walk the, 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 the U R A district too. Thank you so much, Nancy. I appreciate it. Okay, Ellen, okay, go.
Okay. Um, oh, D C I. Okay, so we've got a big crew going to D C I. Yay, Elektra's going. Uh, you're free. I don't know why. Is it because you're the director?
I don't have any idea because I went to pay and they wouldn't let me pay for it.
Yeah, I know. I mean, that's okay. But we got a three-for-one deal, so we've got Nancy, Elektra, Natalie, myself, Audrey Gray, and Amy Care, who is the social media contractor with the Chamber of Commerce, and she also serves on the creative district. So there's six of us going, which will be fun. We're gonna road trip up there. And, uh, it'll be a good time, and we'll bring back lots of ideas. April, April.
First through the third?
Yeah, first through the fourth, and it's in Greeley. Mm-hmm, probably, I'm not sure. So, um.
Yep, anything else about D C I? I don't think I have anything else. Not that I have, uh, yeah.
We'll come back with stuff in May.
Yeah.
Oh.
Yeah, go ahead.
That means we're not gonna be, are we gonna miss the board meeting?
No, 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 that's, it's over a weekend, I believe.
No.
No, I think it's.
Okay. So all three of us will be gone, so it's imperative that everybody else be here on the first.
Well, I will not likely be here either, so we won't have an acquorum.
Would it be willing, would it be worth rescheduling to the, um, the following week or a different day? And everybody else, you want to look at, do you want us to throw out a doodle poll? Or do you want to try and do it right now? Okay, we'll throw out a doodle poll for rescheduling in April.
Good.
And when you do the doodle poll, aside from the, these, Carol and, um, uh, make sure you remember, uh, Paragon, because they're planning to present in April, so we'll need to make sure that they can attend.
Good, good.
Are you all around? So, so I'll send out a doodle poll for a tentative.
For the eighth of April.
And also, um, we'll see if I can get Park Row here as well to talk about their, that might be Ben.
Paragon and Park Row.
Okay. Nancy, city liaison report.
First of all, I want to apologize. I was conflating, um, charter with code. So code and ordinance are the same thing. So when we were talking about who governs, so the ordinance is, governs the existing city boards and commissions. This is not one of those, so anyway, sorry about that. Um, we, on the twenty-second of February, spent the, that was Saturday, we spent a day doing strategic planning. Um, we started out with doing some goals for Denise, and, uh, I think of interest, great interest to this board is that one of the goals that we set for her is, well, we gave her issues, like seven issues to develop goals around. One of them was economic development. So, uh, hopefully that will assist and, uh, coalesce some of the economic development, um, initiatives within the city. We did put forth a resolution for the dissolution of the Metro District, for a lot of reasons, and I think that the impetus for that was really the closing of the bathrooms. Um, it was frustrating to a lot of community members as well as just years of not being in complete alignment between the city and the Metro District. So that, that's also a, and that, I want to clarify that that does not mean that the, um, the city has unilateral authority to close down the Metro District. It is a long process, legal process by which, um, if they don't agree to dissolve, then they can come back with their plan, and then it would go to a judge and ultimately would be decided within the courts. So, um, that's going to be interesting, and I do want to say again that the Metro District, um, is having an election. It's too late now. The deadline for nominations was Friday. But, um, it's going to be interesting to see how their, uh, elections play out. Um, we approved the Black Canyon Open Space Master Plan, uh, which is, if you're not aware of where that space is, it's that away. It's near, um, Black Canyon or the road up to, um, Mountain Shadows. Say again? Cedar Heights, thank you, yes. Um, it's just off to the left of that road. Beautiful, beautiful piece of property. Uh, we have to do a master plan because it's in the, um, uh, Palmer Land Trust Conservation Eastman. Um, we are looking at, for them, ever since I've been on council, we've been looking at Ruckston Corridor improvements. And we have, uh, some money, I can't remember now, over, I can't remember how much money, a lot of money to do some improvements on Ruckston Corridor, um, but can't do what we mainly want to do. I think council's interest is primarily in undergrounding, and we can do a little bit of undergrounding, uh, utilities with that. So they're coming back to us with more proposals. We are looking at, so tonight, we will be looking at Soda Springs Park Policy for Parking Behind the Pavilion. Uh, council has determined that no more parking will be allowed behind that for events with the exception of one truck to bring in equipment and so on, if you have a band or something playing up on the stage. In addition to that, there'll be forty-four, um, slots set aside on, parking slots set aside on Park Avenue for bands and so on to park along there. So that's going to be interesting to see if that passes tonight. And oh, we, uh, approved a liquor license for aromatherapy. Is that what they call it? Aura therapy. Authentic, whatever.
Oh, the, the one that's in the old stagecoach?
Yeah, yeah, so they now have a liquor license, so that's exciting. And tonight we'll be looking, um, proclamation on diversity called equity and inclusion, which, uh, is a risk, but I think it's well worth it. It outlines the values of the city. So let's just not hope we don't have any fires and FEMA won't be allowed to come in. But I think it's very important that we, we, uh, express clearly what the values of the city are. Um, we'll also be, uh, looking at Pat's, Patsy's, um, appointment to the U R A. We'll be, uh, looking at appointing Carl Stang to the P P A C G Citizen or Action Committee, the same one that you're on, Barb. And since Alan is coming off of that, correct? And, uh,
Transit?
Is it P P R T A or P P A C G?
P P R T A.
P P R T A. B R T A. Um, and then we're looking to reappoint Anne to the Historic Preservation Commission. So that's all I have unless anyone has any questions for me. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you. I, I have a question. Is, is the reason that, um, the U R A is not listed on here is because it's not a board?
I would assume so, yeah. Same as Metro District, I don't believe it's on there either.
Anywhere.
Because you guys do your own annual report typically.
Okay.
So, and it's, yeah.
Yeah, I, I guess that.
I can bring that up.
Yeah, that might be important, especially.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Especially if we're falling under the ordinances according to the city too, but we're not included as a board.
Yeah, yeah, okay, I'll bring it up. Thanks. Thanks.
I, I'd second that. I mean, it's always disturbed me that we've done some fairly major infrastructure projects and they were reflected in the annual report.
It's important to recognize volunteer time. Really, really important.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you, Nancy, and we'll move on to other business. Anybody have anything? Chat it up. Nope. All right then. I believe we are ready to adjourn. Is there a motion to adjourn? Thank you, Anne. Is there a second? Alan Delwich? All in favor? Bye bye. Thank you.
Good notes. Yeah. Reach out to me and we'll find a date to.
Okay, that sounds fantastic. Yeah. It also helps in the last meeting notes, I didn't have everybody's name for motions and seconds. So I was trying to.
Yeah.
So that's helpful. Thank you. Okay.
Hey, now we gotta wait for the blizzard.
I think the blizzard's in Kansas.
It's out east.
I call my girlfriend that lives at Monument. She's my litmus test and she sent me a picture. We got like, yeah, they did get it a couple of inches. Yeah, it was, it kind of blew. It was the typical blow over Manitou storm.
You, you texted me, I've been waking up thanks to three menopause. Your light, you texted me this morning. I was like, it is up.
Yeah, no.
That's okay. I woke up right before it and then you texted me.
Glad I didn't wake you up. Yeah. No, I get up like 4:00 AM and then I look at emails and.
Right. Yeah. I, I just get up because I get too hot. Open windows and drink water and what.